...then, uh, yes, I have three additions. I'd like to add three examples. Uh, so let's talk about the Miracle League and having them today. And I think the council would come down on what their program is going for. Because I have not heard any from the Miracle League, and I can't tell you the town looks. I'd like to hear. I'd like to make that discussion item E. And I'd like to also add Citizen of the Quarter. The last time we avoided Citizen was back in December. And just want to make sure we don't lose sight of that. And the last thing is, I think one of the council members had talked about an Employee's Day. So I'd like to kind of breathe some life into that, also make that discussion live. So that discussion on I, F, and G, I'd like to add.
Just a question on that. Is the Miracle League here tonight?
No, I think you already have it on the schedule. They're supposed to come here once a quarter, so...
Well, they're not here tonight.
Well, they missed that first quarter.
Hi, Mark. How you doing?
We're gonna follow up on that.
Yeah, with, um, Patrick?
I don't think it's council's responsibility to follow up on that. I think we're pretty lucky to have the Miracle League do that. And I think we should overturn the staff plan.
Well, it's not overturning the staff, because that this is budget time. And we're all including, um, doing some stuff for parks. And I haven't imagined, or I don't want to imagine anymore, are they gonna be part of that budget process?
This one time, would you make one phone call and tell this will be the only time we follow up with them? If they don't come up with a schedule for quarterly meetings, we're gonna consider them pulling out of the park.
Assistant Mayor, you made the...
I spoke with David Dray. He's gonna be planning to come to the July 11th meeting. Okay.
Well, that's after the budget.
Okay, July 11th then?
Yeah.
All right, July 11th. So we can pull that off with just a Citizen of the Quarter as E. And then...
For the Employee Recognition Day, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other items, Mr. Warman?
Yeah, I'd like to remove 12D.
Okay.
I'll put that on through to you. I'm looking for somebody from the state to come and talk.
All right, 12D, there we go. Let's go.
I'd like to add, um, to, uh, Old Business, 10C, Year End Cleanup.
That would be 10D.
D, Year End Cleanup. You still want it, but just gonna explain that.
All right.
Does Gary have anything?
Gary?
No.
On the dissent agenda, just to basically identify the budget transfer request, um, just...
You want to put, all right, you want to move that?
Yeah, just to say what it is.
I'll put that as 11C. Anything else? That's it. Kathy, are you, uh, along with us?
Kathy, you have to call these Citizens of the Quarter, if you're calling.
Yeah, Citizen of the Quarter, update your nomination number C. And, uh, or don't elaborate on the Employee Recognition when we get to that. And putting the budget transfers item 11C. And, um, Mr. Cohen, for the Old Business, Year End Cleanup as 10D. And Mr. Warman pulled his review of the policy about hotels on item 12D. Okay, there's no further changes on the motion to approve the amended agenda. So moving on. Mr. Warman? Oh, okay. So Warman's made the motion, all in favor. I can understand that's unanimous. Motion passed. We have presentations. We have Presentation A, Chestnut Square Park, additional on-street parking. Uh, Patrick, can you put that? I'll yield the floor to you, sir.
Sure. Uh, it was brought to our attention on numerous occasions that, uh, people lacking some parking around, uh, the Chestnut, uh, Park, also, and also, uh, Carolina Courts. So we went out there and we were able to identify the addition of approximately 38 parking spaces that could be added around the park. Just to give you an idea, uh, the cost, if we want to go out there and purchase a piece of land and, uh, put a parking lot on it, these days it costs approximately between $15,000 to $19,000 a parking space. So coming up with 38 parking spaces around the park by just doing grinding and pavement marking, I think we came out pretty good. So the only thing that we had to do is the Lemon Drive that is two-way, uh, direction. We have two directions. It's a two-way. Right now, we will convert that to a one-way. And we met today with the property owners, mainly the Lemon, on that side of the Lemon Drive. And they were very okay with making the changes. So it would cost us signage, pavement marking, grinding, and pavement marking. We could accomplish that within a week. So, uh, we just wanted to present it before council and see if you have any comments or input, Kathy.
Yeah, so, to help me understand this, Patrick, we're running into a parking situation because we have a business over there, right? Um, that's taking up a significant number of parking lots for residents to use with interest in the park. Um, so have we communicated with that particular business and see if they would come to the table to meet us halfway? Because obviously, they will benefit from this parking spot as well.
I think that what we accomplished so far, Mr. Warman, is that we met with them. We worked with our legal, and we logged to COVID making events. So one event doesn't approach another. I think that's the main thing what we accomplished so far. I would convey it, or open it to Adam to add any more, if you have any more input in that regard. But I think that's the last thing we've done with that business is agreed on certain numbers of events within an entire year.
Right, anything?
That's great, and we have that in the existing, kind of, memorandum of understanding or agreement. However, as we have seen over the years, that doesn't necessarily translate to an actual coordination in true faith. And we find ourselves in this situation. I know we've already spent money to put the parking spaces on Chestnut Parkway. Eventually, that's gonna be taken away once it gets expanded. But I think the talent is already, from a taxpayer's perspective, has spent quite a bit of money in trying to increase the parking spaces at the benefit of that particular business versus, you know, looking at it from a taxpayer perspective, it's what's gonna come out of pocket, right? So I think if we could do something jointly, I would definitely be in our favor of that.
Absolutely, Mr. Warman. We were planning on meeting, well, actually, we're planning on visiting that agreement one more time. Meet with our legal, and then we meet with them. And I also talked to Captain Chase that if we get to have to use barricades sometimes, we're gonna propose that to maintain the parking spaces needed for our events. So we are planning on visiting that agreement one more time, clear the discussion with them. And that's on the side, because most of these parking spaces that we're coming up with, they're on-street parking, sort of around the perimeter. And we've taken some right terms out just to provide those parking spaces. So we told Librarian, Mr. Warman, that we want to make sure that additional parking spaces are not taken for other businesses than city businesses.
What are we looking at from a perspective of if they don't necessarily, and this may be something you may have to come back with, but if they don't necessarily, if I agree to the parking policy that we put out there, will it be enough teeth in that agreement that makes it a little painful for them, right? So that they don't use that for...
That's something I have to come back and present before. I don't have time to...
So Patrick, the 38 parking spaces, are they all on the street?
They're all on the street.
And the streets are, um, are they town roads?
Yes, they're all public. All the ones that we're dealing with, we own all of them.
Um, because what I want to avoid is that it is a public establishment, and we did provide parking spaces for them when we built Carolina Courts. And I think if any additional spaces come at the expense of the park or the town hall, we kind of, we can look at it the same as if it was a, um, paying for your parking, additional parking. Otherwise, I would like to see if it comes down to that, that's put on the table, that if we're providing, um, town land, town roads for you guys, then maybe we got to see what's the course for us.
Uh, the next step is, I was waiting for the Lemon family to say that they don't have any issues with making that route the one-way. The next step is to meet with Carolina Courts and say, "We would like you to share some of the cost of the grinding and pavement marking."
Okay.
And then any additional step that we see that they have to control, we're gonna move forward with that.
Okay.
Thank you. That's part of the plan.
Okay, great.
And I'd like to add one more item to Mr. Warman in regard to the state project. They are gonna acknowledge the on-street parking. So I don't think they're gonna ask us to take it from four-lane to do, uh, to keep it four-lane. So I think they're okay with us keeping it as two-lane with on-street parking because by not having that median opening on in the Dallas Boulevard, that will reduce the traffic coming onto Chestnut Parkway.
That's great, thank you.
Yes, so they shared that with us during a meeting last week.
What can they say on that? Do you want to send one?
No, just real quick, Patrick, on the, um, is that permanent or is that temporary? You said it was on-street parking.
That would be permanent.
And I'm just curious, Captain Cogle asked you a question about that. You know, we're talking about 38 parking places, and I'm all for adding parking places. But how often are they gonna use those 38 parking places? And this might be a good question for Adam or Captain Cogle. You know, you could take, to put 38 parking places out there and then take away, you know, make a street one-way. What is your recommendation on doing that? Because it seems like that would only be useful for four, five times a year, or is it more than that?
Uh, it just depends. I mean, a lot of it depends on if you're asking if it's gonna be for our event or for their event, because we've all seen their events.
Well, it's for any event.
Along and go way over the capacity out there versus not even having anything put down. So I'm probably the last guy to be the mediator in all of this.
I'm not asking you to be a mediator. I'm just asking you, what do you think about closing the road?
I think that your volume of traffic out there is very light. So any traffic that is in that area is coming to that area right now for those event venues, whether it be the park or whether it be Carolina Courts. I think if you're gonna do it now, is the time to do it. Because if you wait till later on and you get more business or whatever is gonna go in that up-front section, then I think you might have a little bit more existence from whoever would develop or build that property, wanting to have that influx of traffic coming in from that direction.
Well, that was my next question. Um, future traffic, not now. I know it's light now, but, you know, when Chestnut Parkway gets built all the way down, will that be something that at that time you think about not, would that get in the way for that or not?
My hope, my hope would be, and I'm not a planner by any means, but just from looking at it and looking at the growth around here, my hope would be that you would have some public vehicular areas, some parking lots, that would have interconnectivity along that stretch of parcel that's out front now. So that if you had somebody going from one side to the other side, they would be using the parking lot lanes rather than using that actual road or street out there. There again, a lot of that just depends on what goes out front. So I see, I see and I hear the concerns that everybody's brought forth because this has been one of the things that we worked on, on getting the on-street parking on Chestnut. And it was a good, I guess a good thing to hear that they're gonna allow us to leave that on-street parking there because we were all worried whenever we initially did that, that that was gonna be a temporary mandate then, and we were gonna be exploring other options too. So, you know, Patrick and I rode around out there and looked the other day. And the only other viable thing that I see besides purchasing additional property next door is utilizing some of the wooded areas, the walking trail. And I think from, uh, you know, having to go in and clear that out and then bringing the grade up to par and then doing the, either gravel base or asphalt, start getting into a lot of money. So I think he's right in that this is the cheap years for 30-something parking spots. You know, I agree that it may not be used every day, but I think that now is the time that we develop it around there, how we want it to be around our park so that in the future, whoever comes in there building later on, that's the way it is, so...
And one last question. Thank you, Captain Cogle. One last question is, of course, when the town hall gets built across the street and it closes at 5:00 or whenever, how many parking places are we gonna have across the street?
With the current plan, 60. And we're also planning on having some more. If we finish the project in time, we have a lot of money left where we could add. We will add probably about 30 more parking spaces. So that'd be a total of, I think, 90 some parking.
90, and so if there's events on Saturdays or Sundays, I would imagine they could use those. Is it okay to use those 90?
Yes, and our plan, I'm working very closely with Captain Chase to make sure that crossing is safe. So we might end up coming into a four-way stop in both that intersection just to allow people parking both places and make it safer operation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
So my comments dovetail on Captain Cogle's. I know there's, you know, limited things we can do now because of the way it looks, but I'd like to see what a strategic plan would look like when some of that area gets developed around there. Um, again, you know, there's gonna be parking place in the new town hall. If we build connectivity with light to the new town hall, there's parking place on that street. And then also here, there's some land, maybe that could be developed in partnership with Carolina Courts potentially in the future. So it'd be nice to have a strategic plan out looking, you know, one to three years, five to seven years, just to see, kind of in that area, roll open a map and see where we can put some additional parking with the help of Carolina Courts.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Kathy.
Oh, surely you have one to say?
How many parking spaces are over on the street that they're using now?
Uh, surely I don't have an exact number of, uh, how many parking spaces we have currently on-street parking.
On Chestnut Park, uh, there's about, in the section right in front of the park, there's about 90 or so. And then the phase that goes towards 74, there's about half that amount because they couldn't go as close to 74, so a little over 100.
On the road that goes through, this is gonna be a problem, losing those spaces that we have to take care of. Uh, my question is, we sort of got shorted out in the beginning here when this allocation was originally set up. And I agree with Mark. I think they need to pay their portion of whatever we do because they're using all of our facilities anyway. And when something, and I, it was good to go talk to them, and I'm all for you going back to talk to them. But, you know, we need to watch our pocketbook and not worry about them and like that pay their portion. Sort of like the United Nations, let them, they're a part.
One last question.
Um, they brought up the thing of the town hall parking. I will tell you right now that, you know, on the street, and but town hall to me, that's town property, town business. I would look at that as having a parking garage, a parking deck. And if there are events that private, of the privates are gonna use, that they should pay us. And so I know you mentioned, you will speak to them about that when you have that discussion. That if the, um, I think it's a great idea that the parking spaces are there because I would much rather them use the parking spaces at town hall and free up Chestnut Parkway. And that's how Chestnut Parkway, a four-lane back and forth, you know, I don't have to worry about who all lanes on it or somebody.
Yeah, one thing we were planning on doing is put signage at the entrance of town hall that restrict that parking to town hall business. And that's gonna happen anyway during the week and maybe late in the afternoon Mondays and Fridays. But Saturdays and Sundays, all those parking slate spaces could be available for the park. That's something I could look into.
Okay, true.
Captain Cogle's script.
I was just gonna caveat off of what he just said is that I think it may be in long term, you know, we might wanna look at a, you know, either gated entrance or something where we can open up if we're having a town event, where you can welcome people to park there. But then if you wanted to close it off, and by gated, it could be something as simple as a table or you could put a gate, you know, whatever kind of gate that you wanted to on the facility. But that, that might keep you some turnaround traffic out of there at nighttime as well, you know, in that little area and have the parking lot for the town hall actually closed off somehow. Or if you want to go spike strips or something, we can get some. But no, I mean, that way, because the sign is gonna do one thing, but it's really not gonna permit the entrance.
All right, one more thing. Um, I do want to say that, um, I think when previous town manager was here, did tell, you know, if I'm not mistaken, that he did tell Carolina Courts that that was gonna be their additional parking, uh, which, you know, well, I do recall that. Plus, the one last thing you got to remember is what it's for to begin with. Uh, you know, if you want to shut that parking off where nobody else can park, it's just hurting the people that come to the park. They're gonna find, they gotta find a place to go. There's no parking places to park. They're gonna park somewhere. As Captain Cogle will tell you, they're gonna park in the street, they're gonna park people's yards, they're gonna park in driveways, they're gonna park in a lot of different places. So it's actually to help the park in Carolina Courts, especially if they have an event that big, so...
Can I make one more comment on this, oh, Patrick? I mean, if they have it, I don't know how many a year that they have that would over exceed the capacity, that there's always the opportunity to rent a parking lot someplace and shuttle in, right? So they could rent buses and just let them shuttle in the people. So, I mean, there's a lot of things you can do. And again, you know, I think looking more long-term to see, you know, how we can fix this would significantly help the situation.
Thank you, Patrick. For now, that's a great fix. Gary's idea is great, projecting it to the future of what ifs and different possibilities. Address it as each section gets potential development, so... That brings us to the Westy Capital Study. Patrick?
Yeah, I'll make this one short this week. I know we're running out of time for other items. But this is, we had our second public meeting. Our consultant is about 75% complete with their study. Simply, the cross-section is four-lane, median in the middle, sidewalk, urban gutter, planted median. One thing, uh, they determined, and the state was in favor of allowing roundabouts to replace signalized intersection. So I think we came up with approximately six roundabouts to replace non-signalizing, signalizing intersection. And the last item I'd like to report on this project is, according to South Carolina DOT, it was ranked one degree up, so they're ranking it higher right now.
You mean North Carolina?
I'm sorry, North Carolina. North Carolina DOT. So we're excited about the ranking. It's a good thing. And what it does is it will advance the funding in a way, so, but that's all I have. I'm not looking for any questions.
So am I to understand that it's not just sidewalks, but multi-use 10-foot path in some areas?
As of now, I think it's two sidewalks on both sides. Thank you.
Okay. And that brings us to public comments. Captain, we're finding that three minutes to speak. Please keep it civil. Audience, please be respectful. Council, please be respectful. State name when you come up. I'm Paul Korn.
Good evening. I'm Paul, very fine, 19 Big Circle. We're discussing about the parking situation at Chestnut Square Park. I attended the public sector meeting last Thursday night to address some comments. The purpose of Chestnut Parkway was to draw in economic development, also alleviate traffic congestion. But how it's designed now is making it worse. Um, 30 more parking spaces is a temporary fix only for the best. Using the town hall property when the new town hall is open is, again, only 60 spaces. Tournaments start on Thursdays, some larger basketball tournaments. They will take those parking spaces from town staff. I would recommend town staff having decals in their cars or something to show that they are town staff members. That would alleviate some of the problems of unauthorized parking. Also, a $1.2 million spend on Phase 1 Chestnut Parkway and all it's become is the longest parallel parking lot in the state of North Carolina. And once we get Phase 2 and 3, where is this, uh, cars gonna come to when they come from Monroe Road coming towards 74? It's an embolment. You're gonna put all the traffic on any trail at these roads, you're gonna create more problems at this intersection here than you ever seen before. It won't be able to take it. They'll left turns as it is now. Also, recently, I received a letter regarding a public information request. Barbara Jones reports an understanding sent a review by the attorney. I'm still waiting on that, getting an update on that. Uh, the $90,000 was spent on that report based on the invoices I received, a previous public information request. Also, during the last regularly regular scheduled council meeting, an opportunity was wasted too. A resident spoke up here claiming they were threatened or they took it as a threat. Still don't know the whole story. The best way to handle that is just apologize for any misunderstanding that could have taken place and move on. Been the easiest way to handle that situation, so prime to point fingers. And in closing, tomorrow is Flag Day, June 14th. Let's not forget what the flag signifies, who's fought for this country with that flag in the respect that they deserve. That's all I have. Thank you.
That brings us to our work was not paid. Captain Cogle? Oh, welcome.
It's got about an hour and a half. The, um, a couple of things, you know, a couple of months ago, we split the town into districts. So we've just been kind of monitoring that now for two months, trying to see if our line that we drew right into the town kind of divided our workload up. And in May, what we did was we pulled everything together, just trying to look at them. And our calls for service on the north side of the town, those of you that don't know the railroad, is pretty much our dividing line that we drew for right now. And we're gonna end up shuffling that a little bit. But north side of town would be back going, you know, toward Walmart, toward Secret Shortcut. We had 606 calls for service in May on that side of town. South side of town, we have 468. So the self-initiated activity as far as traffic stops, business checks, couldn't have been any closer. 822 up on that side, 821 on the south side. We saw a 12-minute and 10-second average response time on the north side of town. So you're taking 74 and the new bypass construction and all that into account, 10 minutes flat on the south side of town. So we're gonna leave the line where it's at right now. We're staggering now. We're doing a little bit of manpower adjustment where we're gonna put a couple of extra people down here during big times. And instead of trying to alleviate and make that even with the line, we're gonna make it even with manpower. But just to give you guys a heads up, that's kind of what we're working through now with our monthly stuff. We had 83 motor vehicle crashes during May here in town overall. And we took 316 reports taken during May, and that's combined on both sides of town. Chris Lloyd, one of our deputies that's been with the sheriff's office for several years, just recently left us several weeks ago to move back to Texas where his family's from. He's going to, uh, going to work out there in law enforcement. He had a job lined up and been working through that for the past six or eight months. So we filled his position with Leslie Breth, who's been serving as Lake Park deputy for several years now. We stole Leslie over from Lake Park's contract, and they backfilled that by hiring somebody from a wing of police department who started down in Lake Park. Alex Xavier, one of our guys here at Indian Trail, transferred out to a county squad this last pay period as well. And we backfilled and repositioned, or filled his position with Logan Starnes, one of our deputies from internally, within the sheriff's office. Interestingly enough, just last night, Alex Xavier, even though he's working on a patrol squad, was working here in town and stopped a car that I'll talk a little bit more about here in a minute over something that happened last night. But just this afternoon, we had a 34-year-old male pass out in a overdose call out in a Walmart parking lot at 4:00. Narcan had to be administered to him. You guys heard me talk about the Narcan drug here lately and the reversals of what it does with opioid overdoses. So it worked on him, and they got him back this afternoon over at Walmart. May 27th, Crossroads Ford reported another Mustang stolen to us. And that car had been stolen for a little over a week and a half before they figured out it was gone. They got a large lot, lot of cars. The seller was selling on Craigslist pretty cheap. So this is my public safety announcement for today. If you're gonna buy a Mustang on Craigslist...
Flash flood warning this area till 10:00 PM ET. Avoid flood areas. Check local media and W S.
There's little new miles on it. But luckily, the purchaser on that Googled the VIN number, figured out, and went back to Crossroads. And because you can pull up where a car was originally sold to on the invoice. So they called Crossroads about it, which tipped them off to, hey, we gotta miss the car. We set up the purchase there in Bible at the mall and took a gentleman into custody that was in the car. was in the car. We've since tied into another fellow by the name of Todd Houston, who was actually the person that was down here and took the car, and he's got several outstanding warrants for theft of vehicles all across the Charlotte region, and he likes to go over there and bring the one key from one kind of car and swap it out while it's taken in test drive and one of those little cars. Hopefully, Crossroads Ford's have taken some action at this point, trying to tighten up a little bit over there. We had some car and wheel theft, or wheel theft in cars last night. One of our dealerships here in Town Metro Honda had approximately thirty vehicles with windows busted out on them, and about eight of those vehicles had the tires and wheels taken off of them, along with another car lot from directly across the road that had some car stereos taken. We've got a good lead, Alex Xavier, our former deputy here in Indian Trail, who is now working on the squad, but still back here in Indian Trail working, stopped a car last night that we matched up to a car on a video surveillance from that at one o'clock this morning, so hopefully that's going to pan out the text, we're running with that today. Last Thursday, at about twelve twenty, we had two deputies, Sandy Shaw and Mike Kenner, responding with EMS to a call on Picket Circle. Some of you guys may have read this on Facebook or seen it on the news. We had a ten-month-old little boy named Lucas that had been assaulted and been abused by his father, twenty-five-year-old Kyle Bennett. We were arrested and charged with two counts of felony child abuse. The ten-month-old child had been in and out of the hospital, and had probably only spent about three, three, or excuse me, ten month, giving my dates wrong, but he'd probably spent about three weeks at home period out of that, he's ten-week-old, and so he, he's still sedated right now, still in intensive care, but don't know if that child's going to make it or not, so just keep that fact in your prayers. And he's sitting out in jail and need another mom, and will be there until we get a resolution on that matter in court, so. The news did cover that, so in case any of you saw it, that's what we deal with with it. And then the last time I was up here talking to you, I was talking to you about car break-ins, just like every time I get up here and talk to you about car break-ins, and say, take your guns out of your car, your computer out of your car, your wallet out of your car. So we had a bunch over in Merryweather that we talked about last time I was here. We got a rider's palm print, which is basically this part of your palm, off of one of the cars, one of our crime scene technicians came out to Merryweather and retrieved that palm print. We did an internal database search, and we actually matched that palm print up to eighteen-year-old Jacob Kimling from Matthews, and at this point, he's only been charged with thirty-seven criminal counts of breaking into cars and assaulting a motor vehicle, or ferret motor vehicle, and those were all during the May nineteenth spree that he took on over in Merryweather. And what was interesting about that was, as soon as we got the match back on his palm print, then we in turn did a search warrant on his phone records, which pinged and put him in that proximity of that area during the time that all those motor vehicle break-ins were occurring. So since we've done that well, we thought we might as well go ahead and dig a little bit deeper, so we're waiting on the results back from another search warrant, to get some results back on his phone from some other dates and nights, and going to start matching him up, hopefully, to some other car break-ins over in Brandon Oaks and up and down Rogers Grove area. So that was a pretty good, a pretty good little lead. I'll sit down and let you have your questions.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda on the motion approved. All in favor? All in favor? We can represent unanimously pass. Public hearing, we have item A, FY two zero one seven, two zero one eight, preliminary budget hearing.